Thank you. Thank you all for being here. We're thrilled to see your smiling faces at the first of this year. We are pleased and honored to have you. If you have any device that might, for instance, ring, chirp, beep, blow a horn, whatever they do, would you please turn it to silence so that we can give you our full attention and you can give us yours? So, calling to order the Fort Mill Town Council meeting for Monday, January the 8th. We, as a council, will stand for a pledge and an invocation given by Mr. Helms. So with that, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we come before you tonight, we want to thank you for the many blessings of life you've instilled upon us. And thank you for what comfort that you endowed upon us this past year, helping us do the business of the town. We pray that you be with us tonight, give us the wisdom to conduct the town's business. We give you praise and glory for it all. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ronnie. Well, I heard there was a football game tonight that we might want to see. I also have watched the news and weather to see that it looks like some kind of apocalypse might occur tonight or tomorrow. So, we will go about the business as quickly as possible. But it really touches my heart to see so many faces of you that support us in the work that we do. There are four of us that will be sworn in again tonight. We were all incumbents and we're blessed to be chosen again for this service. This is a service of honor and a service of love. It's certainly not something we do because it's happy all the time. But it is something that we put our heart, soul, our time. We couldn't do that without you, without those of you that support us. I look at Lottie and I think about three kids and homework and all the times we're keeping Chris late. There's S.K., there's Brian. The things that you do to support us are invaluable. The emails I read that give encouragement and motivation. Our staff that's never tired and never ceases to amaze us. So, thank you all for being here to celebrate with us this evening. We do have some swearing ins and we'll go as quickly as we can. I'm with Lisa. Sometimes I don't hear it the way I ought to say it, so we may stumble a bit, but the intent and the heart is pure. So with that, council members, you have seen the December the 11th, 2023 council meeting minutes. Are there any changes, deletions?
Here and now, I move to approve the minutes. Shred.
I have a motion to approve.
A second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Okay. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on municipal matters except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. Citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Do we have anyone signed in this evening?
No ma'am.
We do not. Presentation number one, the swearing in ceremony for the appointment of Gwen H. Savage, that would be me, as mayor for the town of Fort Mill. This term is for four years, expiring January 2028. Judge Colin Okoye will honor us and my daughter, who took the Bible?
I had a queen.
All right. Who took that Bible? I need that.
My daughter Sarah will be holding the Bible for me. I could not be more proud to have her with me. This is the third time that she has assisted. Parks full, what can I say?
Aye, Gwen Savage.
Aye, Gwen Savage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of the state.
According to the Constitution of the state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office which I've been elected.
Of the office of which I've been elected.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duty thereof.
Discharge the duty thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of this state.
And the United States.
And the United States.
As mayor of the town of Fort Mill.
As the mayor of the town of Fort Mill.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly and impartially.
Fairly and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And skill.
And skill.
Exercise the trust.
Exercise the trust.
Repose in me.
Repose in me.
And will use my best.
And will use my best.
Endeavors to preserve.
Endeavors to preserve.
The peace.
The peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to the law.
According to the law.
Purpose for which I've been elected.
Purpose for which I've been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I did. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. I think the chant is "Four More Years." Presentation number two, swearing in ceremony for the appointment of Lisa Cook as council member representing at large, seat two, for the town of Fort Mill. The appointment is for a term of four years, expiring in January of 2028. Judge Okoye will assist us as well.
You can come up too, Brian. I think that Lisa's husband, Brian, and daughter, S.K., are assisting her.
My Sarah, Sarah K., and I'm going to use two Bibles.
Okay, sure.
This was my grandfather's from WWII. It was his New Testament that he carried in his pocket.
Aye, Lisa Cook.
Aye, Lisa Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of the state.
According to the Constitution of the state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office which I've been elected.
Of the office of which I've been elected.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As council member.
As council member.
Of the town of Fort Mill.
Of the town of Fort Mill.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly.
Fairly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And skill.
And skill.
Exercise the trust.
Exercise the trust.
Repose in me.
Repose in me.
And will use the best of my endeavors.
And will use the best of my endeavors.
To preserve.
To preserve.
The peace.
The peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to law.
According to law.
The purpose for which.
The purpose for which.
I've been elected.
I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Presentation number three, swearing in ceremony for the appointment of Chris Moody as council member representing Ward Four for the town of Fort Mill. This appointment is for a term of four years, expiring in January 2028. Chris, if you would, please also introduce your family. Do you folks need seats? We can adjust. You sure?
This is my wife, Lottie, oldest son, Cole, my daughter, Lucy, and my youngest son, David.
You guys can come up front, because you're, there you go. Perfect. Is that good?
I, Chris Moody.
I, Chris Moody.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
To exercise.
To exercise.
The duty of the office.
The duty of the office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of this state.
And the United States.
And the United States.
As council member of the town of Fort Mill.
As council member of the town of Fort Mill.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly.
Fairly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And skill.
And skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And I will use the best of my endeavors.
And I will use the best of my endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
Preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
Carry into effect.
According to the law and purposes.
According to the law and purposes.
For which I've been elected.
For which I've been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, darling. Now, presentation number four, the swearing in ceremony for the appointment of Ronald Helms as council member representing Ward Two for the town of Fort Mill. This appointment is for a term of four years, expiring in January 2028. Pastor Jacob King will be swearing in, Ronnie, for his role. And his wife, Marcia.
I, Ronald Helms.
I, Ronald Helms.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the state.
The Constitution of the state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As a council member of the town of Fort Mill.
As a council member of the town of Fort Mill.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly.
Fairly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust imposed in me.
And will use my best endeavors.
And will use my best endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect according to the law.
And carry into effect according to the law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
For the purposes for which I've been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We just keep hearing a phone jingle. Okay. All right. Thank you so much again. We appreciate each and every one of you joining us this evening. Hope you have a good night and a safe evening. All right. Council members, thank you again for your desire to serve and I am honored to serve again with each and every one of you. So, I appreciate you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Old business item number one, first reading and ordinance annexing York County tax map number 738-0000063 and a portion of 738-0000062 containing approximately 5.25 acres located at the intersection of Fort Mill Parkway and Holbrook Road. Penelope is our subject matter expert. And I understand that this needs to be deferred again.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct. And I just wanted to say, Happy New Year to all of you.
Happy New Year to you!
And congratulations. I look forward to working another four years with mayor and the council member. But yes, mayor, this has been deferred because of the property owner, or excuse me, the applicant is out of the country and they would like to defer until April 8th.
Okay. Do I have a motion that would accommodate a deferment of this item until the April 8th meeting?
I'm making a motion to defer this, or this until the...
April 8th.
April 8th meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, I got a motion and a second to defer this item to the April 8th meeting. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, thank you so much. All right. Penelope, I think you just might as well stay there.
Okay.
New business item number one, public hearing and first reading and ordinance annexing York County tax map number 709-0000020 containing 1.13 acres. Penelope, what would you like to tell us about this?
Yes, the applicant, Mr. Ron Burner, would like to annex this property into the town limits. The applicant has indicated upon annexation, he would like to build a single-family residence to be constructed on the parcel. He's not sure at what time he will build, but he hopes to build in the near future. With every annexation, when they ask for to come into the town, we have to give it a zoning designation. So, if this council decides to annex this parcel, it would have an R-25 residential zoning district, which complies with the future lane use map. One thing I also would like to say, you know, one of the other reasons, other than building the house, is to be able to have, the reason for the annexation is to be able to have water and sewer to provide that service. He would, unless exempted by York County Planning and Development Services, just want to state for the record, the applicant would have to be required to pay the $18,158 for the Fort Mill school impact fee prior to being granted a building permit by the town of Fort Mill and he would have to provide that receipt to us. One other thing on this staff report, it's something new for 2024. If you've noticed on the staff report, it says, "Projects planned under construction in proximity to the subject property." From now on, staff's going to have this section, so you know exactly what has been approved. Because for humans, we forget what has been approved and the density of it. So, with this property, it's close to the Patterson Pond, which is a new subdivision that was already zoned back when the county, excuse me, the town had an R-5. So, that is basically a 19-lot, single-family detached subdivision located on West Hensley Road. It received final plat approval from Planning Commission on October 17th, 2023. This project is about almost a mile from the subject property. The developer for the Patterson Pond was Polty Home Company. The model home is now being under construction for the Patterson Pond and we anticipate additional homes to start being built in the first quarter of 2024. So, going back to this application tonight, the property is contiguous to the town limits and it is eligible for annexation.
Okay. As we prep for these meetings, oftentimes we will have discussions and questions to ensure when we get here, we're confident with the information that we are considering. And I think Councilman Cook had a good question in regards to, this is a donut hole, if you will, where we have county property surrounded by town property. And what are the benefits and what are the negatives to doing so? And I believe that closing those donut holes is beneficial for the town. So, when someone comes to us, and for those of you that are unfamiliar with South Carolina annexation, we cannot go out and aggressively ask people to annex into the town. So, for someone to come to us and it would help us close that hole, which would be better for services, then I think that's a positive reason. I also have a friend and a neighbor to this property that has concerns and I think they're extremely legitimate concerns, that this is one lane barely above a gravel-grade road. It's not wide enough. There will be considerations that need to be given for a person to build down there on, you know, not closing off access to private properties and how would that road change, if any? So, I just want to put those things on the table as council considers this annexation request. Do you have questions?
So, I've had a good many of them answered prior, as I was asking questions, but just putting it back out there too. So, if this one is annexed in, this leaves us with five other properties, from what I'm seeing on our map, that would still be in the county, but they are all surrounded, basically, by everything in the town.
Actually, it's four.
It would be four?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's one correction that I've sent to York County GIS, because the other property, that number five that you saw was actually annexed.
Okay.
Many years ago.
And how does it... Do you know how we currently handle emergency services down in here? I know we're talking about the applicant's interest because of water and sewer, but how are we handling trash pickup with the diversity?
Well, I mean, if this parcel gets part, if it gets annexed into the town, then he is, you know, we are required to provide him services. So, he would have town service for this parcel. In regards to the road itself, because you have town and county, it is a shared kind of maintenance. But from my understanding, talking with Chris Pettit earlier, you know, the properties that are already on Navasi Trail, you know, if it's in the town limits, we're responsible for the road. If it's not, those parcels are not in the town limits, the county maintains a portion of that road.
And if annexed, my request would be that we make sure that the county knows that this is going on only because of such the partnership that has to happen on that road.
Yeah. And just for you to know, Ms. Cook, that after tonight's meeting, if it does say pass first reading, we have a working arrangement with York County that we let their Register of Deeds Office know that there's actually a case that's going through the process and more than likely will get approved second reading. So, they start working on the data to change the maps. So, basically, everybody then, when they go to York County GIS, they could see, once this gets approved second reading, that they don't have, you know, they have about 10 days or so to, like, put it on the map.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Any further questions, comments, concerns?
Mayor, this is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing.
Yes.
So, I need to declare that open at this point. I thought it was a good idea to let her describe the project, if that's okay. All right. For that point, we're going to open this as a public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak may join us at the podium and ask questions or make comments. I see no one at this point interested in doing that, so we will close the public meeting. All right. Now, we have had a description from Penelope on the request and it is a first reading. So, do we have someone interested in making a motion?
Make a motion to approve new business item number one.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And I have a second. A motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. This is a two-reading item, so we will have to go over this one more time. Thank you. At that point, council does have executive session items that we need to address tonight. Please note that council may take action on these items listed on the agenda when they come back into public session, but we do not take votes in executive session. Executive session item number one, discussions incident to personnel matters, town manager. Executive session item number two, discussion of contractual matters relating to the purchase of real property. Executive session item number three, receipt of legal advice relating to potential claims and ongoing legal matters. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion, we go into executive session.
Second.
And I have two seconds. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you so much. All right. We will move into information and discussion item number one. We had a unanimous vote to return to regular session on the discussion of credit card convenience fees. And is this going to be Eric or you, Chris?
Eric will kind of start the conversation.
Thank you.
I don't know what kind of angle you want us to take. We currently passed the convenience fee for credit cards on to the customer. There was some discussion about potentially bringing that back to the town side of the ledger. So, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Mayor, the gist of this is, it's an opportunity for us to push more of our customers to utilizing online methods to make payments, which reduces impacts of staff, which sort of adds some flexibility for us to utilize staff differently in the long run as we continue to make online opportunities available. It reduces the folks that don't want to pay that convenience fee and make them come into town hall. It reduces those folks coming into town hall. And the more customers we can push to utilizing automated systems, the better it is for town staff.
Brings us up at least to 1990.
This is an opportunity for us to enhance that.
Give me the cost comparatives. What does it cost a customer today if they bear the cost of the transaction?
The convenience fee's 3%.
3% of the transaction?
Of the transaction. And so, order of magnitude, we're talking about $150,000 a year.
Okay, currently?
Currently.
So, the expectation would be that that number would rise, given that it's not costing someone to do it, that they will be more apt to do it?
Correct.
Okay.
Wait a minute, $150,000, is that something that if we took it all away, then the town would absorb that $150,000?
Right.
Yeah, instead of passing it along to the customer, we would eat that to push more folks to utilizing that.
Quite a few that do that, yeah.
And in the long run, it's going to save us from hiring another staff member. As the number of transaction increases, it'll, in the long run, speed up, you know, the lines to get through things, less people, quicker service. Those are some of the things.
I just think it's a courtesy that most businesses offer these days to do business, but then again, you're buying products in most cases. In our case, it's a product that's an expectation, so I get the nuance. But I think $150,000 to make a service more available to our customers that's available most everywhere else and not have to hire additional personnel, it's an immediate payment and not having to chase down checks. I just think with what we're going back to the cutoffs, it's something that lessens the heat.
I'm kind of, I'm the other side. We've been on auto draft for years with the town and for us to take a $150,000 hit, I mean, I just don't see where that's going to be a smart move to, for us to absorb that. I mean, if it's a part of doing business, they can either send in a check or, and maybe there's some confusion on my part about where this 3%, where it kicks in. Is it just if somebody walks up to the window, that pays? Or is it...
No, so it's anyone that uses a credit card. So, a couple of things. A lot of these issues are really blended and kind of come together. You know, if we move out of our existing facility, move into another facility, just by the way you're structured, the way you do business is going to change a little bit. We've been tracking and we don't have the data in front of us, but we can easily provide it to show you roughly how many people pay with credit cards, buy checks, bank draft, what have you. So, ultimately, what we would like to do is try to reduce the amount of traffic of people who are actually walking into town hall to do business. And we do have people that walk in to pay with credit card. We have people who actually pay with a credit card running through the, or driving through the drive-through window. So, ultimately, we would love to be able to push everybody to a bank draft to where even those credit card fees are then ultimately avoided, even on our side. So, it's an integrated approach, but this is just kind of one step.
Will it take us a step closer to allowing people to apply for service and pay the deposit without coming to the office?
One's not dependent upon the other, unfortunately.
To me, the people not coming to the office presented itself, remember? You know, the gentleman drove here, we weren't here, had to do it first. That needs to be cleaned up. And if it's part of this 150, I'd say that's great. You know, if it's a fee we're paying to accommodate better customer service, fewer customer service representatives we have to pay rotating benefits for, then I have no problem with it.
So, where we're saving this $150,000 is having nobody to attend to somebody walking in?
It's, we've never said that it would be a net savings or actually money maker to us.
I misspoke. I apologize.
Yeah, it's one of, ultimately, we will be able to gain efficiencies by fewer staff or at least fewer staff dedicated strictly to maintaining that level of service.
So, how will they pay then? I guess I'm, and I apologize, I'm don't understand. It's a method of payment. It's a method of using a credit card, basically. So, you think that's going to encourage people to come in and pay by credit card? So, they're going to do it automatically?
They'll pay online by credit card.
They'll pay online by credit card.
So, I think part of the issue here goes to, we don't have enough information to make a decision. I mean, honestly, in my opinion, we don't know the percentage of people using credit card is it the same versus bill pay versus writing a check? Is the fee the same for debit card versus credit card or is it just a credit card?
And so, what we wanted to do this evening was to start the conversation so that, get the questions that you may have so that we can come to you, answer all those questions, and you can be prepared to move forward one way or another. We wanted to initially start the conversation this evening. This was not intended to make a decision.
Perfect. I think for me, I need to know what all the options are and what are, fun word of the day, metrics, of how those options are being used. I know, I know, exactly. But, you know, how are they being used? Honestly, I don't know. I don't pay our bill. My husband deals with it, so I don't know if we're on auto draft or he's still writing a check or, you know, I have no idea. The other question I would say is, you know, as we're looking at doing the... say is, you know, as we're looking at doing this, would we, let's say we're trying to promote bill pay, paying online, credit card, debit card, whatever, electronic transactions, are we including like QR codes, real easy to scan and pay from your phone? Are we doing all the things other than waiving the fee to entice people to use a card before we go through?
QR codes are not secure.
That can be.
No, they're not secure.
I think I've asked this question.
You can have it to take you to the website to make the payment.
Yeah, the QR codes can be hacked.
Yeah, we take a number of, you know, a lot of times those come through the bank, through FiveServe.
Well, I know, I think Duke, I don't pay that fee.
No, you don't.
I don't pay it with York County Natural Gas.
No, you don't.
I don't pay it with Caporam. I think the town's the only one to pay, but at the same time, you know, when I tie, I pay, I pay, you can voluntarily pay the fee. I'm not saying First Baptist takes extra money of mine, but you can, you know, so.
And that'd be a good point, Chris, to have that marker for us as well with the information. What do other municipalities do, or other utility functions that we use?
Yeah. I was just thinking, trying to off the top of my head, what I pay that for. But I understand, I mean, there's, there could be a benefit to it as well.
When I pay to county, I use E-check, because E-check doesn't charge you a fee.
Yeah. And that kind of plays into my question, is whether are other options before we just walk away? If I pay with debit versus credit, you know, I was at the post office doing something yesterday, and if I paid with debit card, you didn't get charged the fee. If you paid with credit, you couldn't, you got it. So I think that's the clarification I would need.
I guess for my company, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be okay at all with taking on the expense of $150,000, when there may be another way to pay, or to try to, from a PR standpoint or pure communication point, entice people to pay with auto draft or another means.
There's a, there's a lot of different topics that are being touched on. And I apologize, because I was told that this was an issue that you as a council kinda had already talked about and was just, so I only had just a little bit of information to just kinda tell you what the cost was. But there's a lot of different issues here. We accept payments by a lot of different ways. So ideally, you know, majority of the people, or the largest percentage of people pay with bank draft. But we have FiveServe. We take credit cards. We take people who come in, walk into the counter, they pay with cash, they pay with a check, they pay with a credit card. We have people that come through a drive-through window, they pay with cash, they pay with a check, they pay with a credit card. We have payments over telephone. So we have a number of ways in which they could pay. Each one has a different cost to the town. So we can give you all the percentages of who pays when, how, and where. The question really becomes, do we wanna streamline that any at all? And this is a topic with regards to credit cards that happens a lot, and everybody has the exact same conversation. Some people feel strongly that the convenience fee is something that the customer should pay because it's a convenience for them. Some people think that the entity themselves should spread that cost of doing business out across everybody. We know that we have 10,000 utility customers. We know that we're gonna be adding a lot, and we know what that number's gonna be over the next 10, 20 years. So how do we want to take payments from the public? How open do we wanna be to people walking into a building to do business, when don't really have to be? The most inefficient way of taking a payment is to have someone physically walk in and give you cash, or a check, or pay with a credit card. So how do we entice people to get to different payment methods? So there's a lot of different issues here, so.
And I look for us to ask when they come in. If we waive that 3%, would you have paid online and not come in?
I don't think they know. I think the people that look at the 3%, this is just my guesstimate because of other billing. People like us that move to paying all our bills on credit cards get travel miles. Those are people that are looking at, do I wanna pay that fee to get that travel mile?
That's why I was asking if the fee is there for a debit card versus credit card.
I don't think it is.
I don't think it is either. I don't think it is your debit or direct.
Yeah, exactly. For me, if that's the case, then I would say.
But there are people like me that don't use debit cards.
Unless you use it at service station, there's no difference.
But back in the day, you used to write a check.
Yeah.
So there are, that is a choice that somebody is making. You know what, I can avoid that 3% if I do it by this way or that way.
Yeah.
But if they insist on coming in.
And to that, to that point, when we have 1,000 people pay with a check a month, then we have somebody who's sitting there opening up 1,000 envelopes and processing 1,000 checks.
And then you have 1,000 risk it bounces.
Yeah, but the converse side of it, if I currently do a bank draft, and you're gonna waive that 3% and you're gonna absorb it, I'm gonna get my miles and switch to a credit card. So all of a sudden, it may become more of an expense for the town.
Becomes more of a, it becomes more of a cash expense on the front end, but then you're gaining it back in efficiency from your staff, because they're not taking as much time to process those payments.
Yeah, I think it gets back to, we need to see the metrics. If you're gonna gain, you know, 20 consumers that now will pay because you, or with debit card because you waived that fee.
It really just comes down to what do you as a council want? Do you wanna offer more ways for people to pay, or do you wanna offer last ways? That's what it really comes down to.
I wanna make it easy to do business.
Yeah, that was my whole point. You know, I think any barrier we can remove to make it easier for people to pay us and us get the money almost instantaneous, sounded like a win to me. And then we didn't have to add staff for that. We have so many other things that we've missed that I think I would rather have staff addressing than just opening envelopes or stuffing things. Just me. I know we've talked about this a couple of times prior, and, you know, it's my decision that we're gonna vote on a lot of things this year. We wouldn't have voted on previous, just so we can document, so we don't have people at loose ends of not knowing what we agreed on and what we didn't. So, sorry.
We'll come back with more information next time. Again, we just intended to kinda start the conversation this evening.
We did, and it worked. I think it did a conversation.
Yeah, we just need benefits and costs. And I know that's gonna include extrapolating some things we don't, we can't guarantee.
So we would say like a monthly, like a, can we, you wanna snapshot a one month transaction?
We can give you, because, matter of fact, I just received it today, so we have every transaction for the last six months. And so we can just give you a breakdown of how it is. So you can see how many people pay by what methodology.
Okay.
So, but getting into how much does it cost to process a check? How much does it cost to process a credit card? How much, or, you know, or take a cash payment? I mean, we can, we can come, but we could put numbers on a piece of paper, but I'm not gonna really put a lot into it, because you start talking about what is, what is the value of the time of the employee who's doing all of that? You very quickly spend more time doing the analysis than you actually gain.
When you look at that point, you're just looking at sour. What does that person do all day, every day? And that's, if you have two people making.
Almost like a cost allocation.
Yeah, but for a business the size of even us, compared to some of the larger businesses that have multi-millions of customers, it shrinks the resistance to take on that burden because it frees you up otherwise, so.
Because one of the reasons I started looking at it was, particularly with check payments, because checks are the most tedious and time-consuming, is that if you had the volume to do either a lockbox or an e-box. So then that way, we're taking, instead of a couple of thousand payments a month by check, we're getting one electronic file from a bank. There's pitfalls to that. But I don't know if we necessarily have the volume to warrant going down a path of a lockbox and e-box. I would love to do that, but I don't, I don't think we're there yet, so.
It's a half-step that we took at my previous employment when we closed down the offices in each town. Yeah, we did. We set up partnerships with Family Dollar and put lockboxes so that people of a certain generation that still wanted to pay with a check had those options, wanted to pay in person.
Right.
And that was a half-step to moving it towards more electronic, which was very beneficial for the company.
And if we're moving into one building to another.
Yes.
You're talking about, the way you do business is gonna change. And do you ultimately want to have it set up to where people walk in to pay? Because there's a lot of businesses that you don't do that anymore.
I think pre-pandemic, when we first opened the office, the drive-through was wildly popular. I think after the pandemic, things, I just don't see as many people using it as I did before. Maybe they're just not. But I think it will be interesting to see the numbers of usage and the benefit or negative of.
Another part is, we're currently accepting payments in multiple places. When you look at people registering for Parks and Rec, or potentially paying a police ticket, you know, I think that consolidation through one business office might help, but I don't know. Again, it's hard to, I'm guessing, until we have more information. So I love that you're coming to us with ways of streamlining our business, being more digital with, you know, more efficient, because we do need a plan for the growth continues to happen.
More and more people are going cashless, too.
Not sure.
Perfect.
Okay. Alright, for the time of evening, Chris, I think it would be good for you to inform staff, council, that we're not closing our administrative offices tomorrow, although others have. We're all aware that schools are remote tomorrow because of the weather conditions. Again, they make it sound apocalyptic. But we're gonna be, you know, reasonable with people that can or can't get here. But I just think I wanted council to know, there was a discussion that took place for that. There have been plans made within staff to address the potential situations that we might be placed in as a, as a town, and we're ready, right?
That's correct.
Safety's first. We don't put people in hazardous conditions to respond to a problem. We respond when it's safe to do so. But be thinking of our teammates that will be called for trees down, or power outages, or whatever might happen.
Trees down, so forth.
You know, just, just be keeping those folks in your thoughts, please.
Speaking of tree downs, if there is anything we can do about that tree across from White Grove, if it's us calling, sending emails, getting our own chainsaws, I don't know, but it is way too close to the road and it's a nature.
We attempted again to get DOT to handle that as it is their responsibility, but we can take care of that.
Why is it not their property?
I got two options on that one. Seriously. We take one of our bobcats or one of our front-end loaders and just nudge it. Just nudge it that way. I'm serious. It's, the white line is right here, the tree trunk is right here. With hazardous conditions of rain and sliding, it could cause somebody to get killed. And I've already brought this up a dozen times. We also need to consider a policy that says, we ask, it's a safety issue, we rank it, if they can't get to it, we have it done. We call Billy Howell or somebody, have it done and send the bill to them. I think we need a policy that stops us from not taking care of safety issues, because we're not getting the responsive behavior from the other entity. I think we have to do that, because otherwise, they'll just let us take care of it every time.
And something to piggyback sort of was that, there was a leaning tree there on Nims Lake a year or so ago, and it took.
It was on the street I drive every day.
Right, yeah. And it took a while going back and forth. You called DOT and Duke, and I called, and I think Duke finally got it done.
You had to get it done, yeah.
You know, but it took a while.
That's wrong. That's just wrong. And we ought to have the flexibility to say, you have X amount of days to respond. If you don't respond, we'll have it done, we'll send you the bill.
When it's an imminent concern, I agree 100%.
Yeah. We'll take care of that.
I'm just worried, especially tonight and tomorrow. The ground's already.
And that's not gonna look right there anyway.
No, it's not. And guys, listen, it doesn't have to be really, really bad. Right now, the ground's saturated. It's saturated with how a lot of rain. And even, and we're lucky there's no leaves on those trees, by the way.
Oh, yeah.
But 50 mile an hour wind gusts, the ground's already saturated in two to five inches. It's just not a good situation. It's not. So I think looking at the root ball of that tree, a front-end loader could nudge it, and it would take it this far out, which would be great, at least off the apron. That's all I'm asking. Get it off the apron. And if they can't do it, I'll jump on them again at RFATs. I don't know what else to do but bill them. I just don't know what else to do.
Yeah, we've had conversations with DOT about how we operate in situations such as that where our, we take on the responsibility of clearing the roadway for this purpose of maintaining vehicular accessibility. We've had a conversation of billing them for the work. Beyond that, you know the answer I got for that, but we've had that conversation. We've tried to work with them to expedite things, but their responses, they're short staffs, and, you know, let us know, and they'll get to it when they get to it. But we'll take care of this situation on Dobie's.
Even if we just get a chainsaw and cut two feet off of it.
I saw somebody tried. Somebody in recent, last week, tried it, because you can see the mark, and they didn't have a big enough chainsaw. Vixen Retirement was announced in the last RFATs meeting that he is retiring, so we'll have a new contact and maybe we'll resolve some of the issues we've been dancing around.
Yeah.
Maybe. Anything for the good of the whole, because I'm not going person to person.
Just be careful. Everybody's back to school today, but they're out tomorrow. But yeah, just be careful. Kids are back driving, they're walking, they're busting.
Got to close the golf course tomorrow.
We have become such something, you know? I'm just saying. I walked to school five miles in one direction in the snow.
Barefoot.
Eric and I did it.
Alright, I need a motion.
I make a motion, adjourned.
Hang on a second. Monday, the 15th, MLB, MLK, excuse me, Call to Service Day, the town of Fort Mill's got seven different organizations that they're collecting donations for that'll be at town hall. That's always, that's always a great turnout and a great event.
Yes, it is.
Please come out and support that. Thank you.
Second Saturday.
Oh, the cleanup?
Signing up, your signups are out to do that, so it's actually a lot of fun.
Are we still giving out bags, gloves?
I was talking with Mina about that, that they, she's gonna expand it out a little bit more to do where if people wanna go out outside of the big group, like we used to previously, yeah, and do that again.
Mine is under that.
Yeah, I saw Jamie Shire doing that.
I didn't know she was.
I don't know if she's directly, well, she's been kinda coordinating the second Saturday cleanup.
So if we, we used to hand these things out during the farmer's market. How do we do it now?
I can't answer that question, but I can get the answer.
She's organizing it through and kinda tagging up with the Greenway and different things like that. And it's, everybody's going out in one big group, whereas I think it's more, you have the big groups, but also if individuals wanna go out, like what we do.
There's areas there.
See, I want some of the bags to clean up Nims Lake Grove. I'd do it, you know, on my own.
There's a few little focus areas. I know, like Steel Street and.
I don't know how Fort Mill Economic Partners does all of Dobie's. I mean, it's a mess every time and lengthy and hazardous.
Yeah, I saw Chris Wolf out there, had a big bag last time. They're right there.
But if you could kinda get that information, and maybe, I haven't seen Sir Delly post that too much lately. You know, we did get that nasty gram from the man up, not in the town, but upset about the trash up on the entrance near Care Winds. Trash is a problem, folks. I detest the bypass near the recycle center. It's awful, all the time, all the time. So that is an important program, I think, that we instituted. We could probably get more from if we keep up with it.
Absolutely.
I'm willing to do it, boot or not. Anything else for the good of the whole?
Congratulations, Cheryl. Congratulations. Again, do you look forward to.
It's a group effort, my friend.
Exciting things, and proud to be with you.
It's a group effort, thank you. And thank you for your help, all of you, and my teammates all. It was, it was very nice for us to work collectively, to serve together. And I do think we'll make a difference. I do. I was pleased to see the number of people here that.
That's great.
Smiling faces are a good thing, a real good thing.
And I, like, as I said in my prayer, I thank the Lord for helping us through last year to accomplish the things that we got accomplished last year.
That's a good point.
And the group as a whole, working together.
And we know we got two years with this same group, so let's get some stuff done.
Yep, let's roll. Now I'll take that motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Alright, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Not tonight.
Enjoy the football game.